...the delegate who we recognized without the tape. Nice to have you.
It's a great story.
Something, Mr. Mayor?
It's a great story.
Nothing? Okay. Mr. Tillman.
All right, we're ready for ordinance number 2456?
Sure.
Okay. This is an ordinance to the city of Salisbury to amend the following sections, Title 15, Building Instruction of Salisbury Municipal Code, Chapter 15.1 to Electrical Standards, Section .040, Chapter 15.21 For Closed Property Registry, Sections .030A and .060A, Chapter 15.22 Vacant Buildings, Sections .030, .040B, .050, and .080A, Chapter 15.24 Housing Standards, Sections .110, .670, .1290, .1340, .1410, .1610A, .1612, .1620, and .1640, Chapter 15.26 Rental of Residential Premises, Sections .030, .040, .050, .060, .080, and .110, and Chapter 15.27 Property Maintenance Chronic Nuisance Property, Sections .020, .030A, and .060, by deleting the references to the Department of Building Permitting and Inspections, Department of Neighborhood Services and Co. Compliance, Department of Building, Housing, and Zoning, and replacing those references with the Housing and Community Development Department by deleting the references to NSCC and replacing with HCDD, by deleting the references to Internal Services and replacing with Finance by deleting the references to Department of Public Works and replacing with Department of Field Operations to renumber Chapter 15.21, .060 Appeals Procedures to 15.21.070, to eliminate the duplicate numbering of 15.21.060, to correct the misspelled title of the Americans with Disabilities Act in 15.24.1620. Again, I'll dispense with that. The only thing that you need to know is that unlike the packet that you got, this is the one I discussed with the President beforehand, I had discussions with the Director of Infrastructure and Development and also with the Inspector in her department, and it was their opinion that this section really should be changed, and so it's 15.120.040. We're taking out the reference to Middle Department Association of Fire Underwriters, I had no idea what that is, but it's no longer exists, and it was an old reference, and now what we have, the city has approved inspectors, so we're substituting that old reference for approved inspectors, and so anyone doing the work has to hire an approved inspector, and that approved inspector, whichever one it is, can, you know, be the person who initiates whatever action is taken. So, that's, those are the changes that are occurring in there, and the, let's see, okay, it's down under, when we have here that the references that were previously to Department of Building Permitting and Inspections are now going to be references to both Housing and Community Development Department and the Department of Infrastructure and Development. The reason for that is that you, when electrical work is being done, Department of Infrastructure and Development is going to be issuing the initial occupancy permits and would be responsible for enforcing it up to that point, but when you have work done after the fact, it's going to be another department under our code, so we need to list both of them there. And so those are the changes under 15.12.040 that occur. After that, we were changing, again, Department of Neighborhood Services and Code Compliance to Housing and Community Development Department, that's occurring on page three in a couple of places. On page four, same thing, page five, same thing, Neighborhood Services and Code Compliance is being changed to Housing and Community Development, but those are the only changes that are occurring, is just the change of the department name, and that, those same changes continue on page five, and page six.
You have one change from Public Works to Department of Field Operations.
Yes.
On line 215.
Yes. And then we have that, that comes up again on the top of the next page, Department of Public Works to Department of Field Operations as well on page six, and then Department of Public Works, again, we're continuing on with Department of Field Operations in 15.24.1340, 15.24.1410, and then we go to 15.24.1610 for Dwelling Unit Registration, and their Department of Neighborhood Services and Code Compliance becomes Housing and Community Development Department again, continuing through the end of that page. Page seven, Department of Building, Housing, and Zoning becomes Housing and Community Development again, and that continues repeatedly, Housing and Community Development, pretty much through the rest of that, page seven as well. On page eight, it continues, Department of Neighborhood Services and Code Compliance becomes Housing and Community Development, and that continues down through the center of the page, down to 15.26.030, and continuing into 15.26.040, except that we have an Internal Services change, we have the, with a change of the acronym that we discussed in the title, and then Internal Services becomes Finance in that section, and the acronym continues to change in 15.26.050, and 15.26.060, and continues on through page 10 where we have another Internal Services to Finance, again, in subsection E in 15.26.080. Acronym change, again, on top of page 11, it occurs repeatedly, and it occurs again down in subsection D and subsection F, and then when we get down to 15.27.020, Department of Neighborhood Services and Code Compliance becomes Housing and Community Development, and we include the acronym there to explain what we're talking about. Under definitions, Department of Neighborhood Services and Code Compliance becomes Housing and Community Development Department, and, you know, there's a little change in a period, it's changed to a comma under the definition of property, and then, again, the acronym changes in 15.27.030, and 15.27.060 under the appeals, Department of Neighborhood Services and Code Compliance becomes Housing and Community Development, and that is repeated several times in that section, and that's it for that, that ordinance.
I guess on section D back on line 73, the part that's highlighted?
Line 73?
Yeah, the part that's highlighted in our, it's on line 73.
Yes.
Were you looking for an amendment to that, or a change to that?
Well, since this is first reading, you know, if you adopt it as written or as read this evening, then I think we'd be okay.
Oh, as it is?
As read.
Yeah.
Okay. The only thing that I see in there is where it's referring to the Director of the Housing and Community Development Department.
Mm-hmm.
It says, shall have the power to stop electrical work when he is notified. I believe our director is a she.
That was, which line was that?
That's on line 75.
75?
We've got something in the beginning of the code, references at any time.
He could be.
Could be, I think. We've got some, we've got some language somewhere in the code.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it, I think it, yeah. And in some, and in some places, it's been changed, we, this, we were trying to change as little as possible here, but like I said, my conversation today led me to more, so I'll look at that. That was line?
Could it be just he or she?
Or just put slash, he, she.
Which line was that again?
Uh, 75.
75, okay. Oh, okay. Okay, yeah.
Or the director, when the director?
When the director is notified.
Actually, that's changed, the new change as written a minute ago, under that section, it's now going to be both departments, as I indicated, so Housing and Community Development Department and the Department of Infrastructure and Development, or at their written direction. We changed the word he to their because we're talking about two departments, so we, we, you don't have it in front of you, but we have corrected that.
Okay.
At the next reading though, we will have the corrected.
You will have the version that was just done this afternoon.
Good.
But we don't need to make an amendment for that?
No.
No, because you've never, you've never voted it in with the prior wording. It was, it was in your packet.
We're voting it in as read.
But you're voting it in as read this evening, and you'll get a clean copy for the next reading, which will be an abbreviated reading, I assure you.
Definitely. Okay. Where are we? Okay. I'll call the motion, all those in favor of ordinance number 2456 for the first reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. I want to entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2457 for the first reading.
Second.
Mr. Boda, Mr. Rudicil.
Okay, this is a short one, an ordinance at the city to amend Title 15 Buildings and Construction of the Salisbury Municipal Code in Chapter 15.08.09OC, Development Impact Fees, and in Chapter 15.16.110, Designation of the Floor Flood Plane Administrator, by deleting the reference to Public Works and replacing it with Water Works, and by deleting the reference to the Director of Building Permitting and Inspections, replacing it with a position of Building and Permitting, Permits Manager in the Department of Infrastructure and Development. Again, I'll dispense with the whereas clauses, what we're dealing with here is 15.08.090, Public Works becomes Water Works, and in 15.16.110, Director of Building Permitting and Inspections becomes Building and Permits Manager in the Department of Infrastructure and Development. That's it.
Questions? Hearing none, I'll call the motion, all those in favor of ordinance number 2457 for the first reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. I want to entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2458 for the first reading.
Second.
Ms. Jackson, Mr. Rudicil.
Okay. In ordinance to the city of Salisbury to amend the following sections, Title 16 Subdivisions in Salisbury Municipal Code, Chapter 16.04 General Provisions, Sections .010A and .030A, Chapter 16.08 Definitions and General Provisions, Section .010A8, .010B6, .020, .030B, and .040. Chapter 16.16 Preliminary Platte Requirements, Sections .010, Chapter 16.2 Final Platte Requirements, Sections .010A1, B1, C15, and D3, Chapter 16.24 Minor Subdivision, Sections .005, .010A6, 8, and C, Chapter 16.28 Resubdivisions, Corrected Platte Requirements, Section .010AB, Chapter 16.32.010. Record Platte Procedures, Chapter 16.40 Minimum Design Standards, Sections .020, .030, .040B5, .050, .070, .080, .100, .12B5, and .130B. Chapter 16.44 Improvements, Construction Program, Sections .010, .020, .040A4, and C2, .080, .110, and .120. Chapter 16.48 Required Improvements, Sections .010A, B1, CEFHI, .020B, and .030. In Chapter 16.56 Enforcement, Sections .020A, by updating the citations, the Antetat Code of Maryland, by deleting the references to Department of Public Works and Department of Planning, Zoning, and Community Development, and replacing both with the Department of Infrastructure and Development by deleting the position of Director of Department of Planning, Zoning, and Community Development, and replacing it with a position of City Planner in the Department of Infrastructure and Development by deleting the references to the Department of Building, Planning, and Zoning, the Department of Building Permitting Inspections, and the Department of Building, Housing, and Zoning by changing the number of copies needed from five to four into correct numbering and grammatical errors. Again, we'll skip the whereas clauses. Now therefore being enacted and ordained by the city of Salisbury, that Chapter 16.04, 16.08, 16.16, .20, .24, .28, .32, .40, .44, .48, and 16.56 of the city of Salisbury Municipal Code be amended as follows. There, first, 16.04.010, we're just correcting with the updated version of the state code, Public Works is replaced under 16.04.030. Director of the Department of Planning and Zoning, Community Development is replaced with City Planner in the Department of Infrastructure and Development in 16.08.010. In .020, Public Works becomes Infrastructure and Development twice on page two. The Planning Department, which means the Salisbury-Wyconico County Department of Planning, Zoning, and Community Development, becomes the Department of Infrastructure and Development, and under 16.08.030, Public Works becomes Infrastructure and Development, and also under .010. Preliminary Platte requirements, the references, under 16.16.010, Public Works becomes Infrastructure and Development repeatedly on that page three. Page four, Public Works becomes Infrastructure and Development under subsection B, and down there is a, the letter capital L is changed to a lowercase letter in subsection three of C3, and then under C5, Public Works becomes Infrastructure and Development twice. Page five, Public Works becomes Infrastructure and Development at the top of the page, Public Works becomes Infrastructure and Development in subsection 10, and in subsection 12B and 12E. Again, a capital, capital A is deleted under subsection G, five becomes four under subsection D, and that's for the number of copies that was mentioned in the title, Public Works becomes Infrastructure and Development, and then the reference to one copy to the Director of the Department of Building Permitting and Inspections is eliminated. Then we've got just some, you know, where becomes were in line 258, 262, there's an S that's eliminated, and 265, the word of is eliminated, and two, the word two is added. Under 16.20.010, Final Platte, Public Works becomes Infrastructure and Development, also under subsection B, and under subsection C, as well as E, there, that change also takes place, and then subsection, capital D, three, Public Works becomes Infrastructure and Development, and that's repeated in section 16.24.05005, and it's repeated in 16.24.010 subsections A and B, and it is repeated in 16.28.010. 16.32.010, Record Platte, Public Works becomes Infrastructure and Development several times in that section, and 16.40.020, Public Works becomes Infrastructure and Development, and that is repeated in the beginning and under subsection A1, it occurs in the second paragraph of that section twice, and it occurs in subsection 2B as well. Again, that change continues from Public Works to Infrastructure and Development on to lines 513 and 514, and 525 and 5, excuse me, 526, and that also takes place in 542 and 545, and also in 557 and 569, and 577, and 586. Continues to 595, and to line 612, same change, and line 625, and line 635, and it continues on to 642, 650. Again, we eliminate the one copy to the Director of the Department of Building Permitting and Inspections in 651 and 52, and Public Works becomes Infrastructure and Development in 653 and 654, and again, where the fewer copies under subsection E, line 657, Public Works is changed again in 659, and the reference to the copy to the Director of the Department of Building, Housing, and Zoning is eliminated, and under 664, Public Works is eliminated, Infrastructure and Development is added, and that continues with line 670, and 673, and 74, and 679. Continues on to line 690, 695, and 707. It also appears in 717, 718, continues to seven, on 724, and 728, and keeps going, 734, 737, 742, and 743, and occurs at 750, and 752, and 3. Continues to 759, and 60, and 761, and 62. And then under 16.48.020, Improvement Standards, again, line 771, same department change. That also occurs at 780, and lastly, it occurs in 796.
Okay, questions? Hearing none, I'll call the motion, all those in favor of ordinance number 2458 for the first reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. I want to entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2459 for the first reading.
Second.
Mr. Boda, Ms. Jackson.
Okay. It's an ordinance to the city of Salisbury to amend the following sections, Title 17 Zoning of the Salisbury Municipal Code, Chapter 17.04, Sections .100 and .24F2, Chapter 17.08.020, Chapter 17.12, Sections .01A, 030, 040F, 050, and .100C, Chapter 17.20.06OE, 17.28.06OF, Let's see if I can correct that. 17.44.06OF1, and 17.46.05OF, Chapter 17.52, Sections .04OD, .06O, .100E2G, and .12AD, Chapter 17.68.04OE, 17.72.06OE, 17.76.05OF, 17.80.070A, 17.88.05OE, 17.108.030A, 17.108.110A, 17.132.06O, 17.136.06OB, C, 17.114.06OB, C, 17.148.06O.A., 17.150.06O.A., B, A, comma B, H1A, double, small double I, and then capital I, 3.4B, lowercase, and then 17.204.020A, .020A, 17.204.070A, 17.216.200AC, 17.216.210C, 17.216.24BC, 17.220.020C1, 17.220.06OB, C, 17.220.090A3, 17.220.120B, and 17.228.080A. By deleting the references to the Public Works and replacing with Infrastructure and Development by deleting the references to Building Permitting and Inspections, and replacing those references with Infrastructure and Development by deleting references to Building, Housing, and Zoning and replacing with Infrastructure and Development by deleting the reference to Planning and Zoning and replacing it with Infrastructure and Development by deleting the references to DWP and replacing with DID by deleting references to Department of Neighborhood Services and Code Compliance and replacing with Housing and Community Development Department, and by updating the reference to Article 23A with the current reference to the Local Government Article. Again, we're going to skip the whereas clauses. Again, the first change that you see there is 17.04.100, changing to the updated version of local government articles, 6-101 and 6-115, or through 115, line 67 and 68. Further down the page, we're changing Public Works to Infrastructure and Development twice on page two. Page three, we are deleting the reference to Department of Neighborhood Services and adding Housing and Community Development, we're deleting the Public Works and adding Infrastructure and Development. Down in the middle of the page, we're deleting Department of Neighborhood Services, adding Housing and Community Development. Under duties, duties of the Department of Neighborhood Services and Code Compliance is being eliminated, Housing and Community Development is substituted in its place. Under zoning authorizations, again, getting rid of building and housing and adding Infrastructure and Development, Planning Director under line 148, we're eliminating building, housing, and zoning, and substituting Infrastructure and Development, and that is also occurring in lines 151, 152. That's occurring in line 156, 160, that is occurring in line 175, and when, in line 176, we're getting rid of Department of Neighborhood Services and Code Compliance and substituting Housing and Community Development. Page five, Public Works becomes Infrastructure and Development up on line 185, that also occurs in 195 and 205, as well as line 215. On page six, Public Works is eliminated, Infrastructure and Development is added on line 230, line 242, 252, and on line 261, Department of Neighborhood Services and Code Compliance is eliminated, Housing and Community Development is added, and down on page six, line 268 and 69, the same change that I just mentioned. Page seven, Department of Neighborhood Services and Code Compliance, we're substituting Housing and Community Development in line 280, and in 284 and 285, same change, 297, same change, and 302, same change. Public Works is substituted with Infrastructure and Development in line 311. Public, and again, the same change in line 321 and 334, and Public Works and Director of Building Permitting and Inspections is replaced with Infrastructure and Development in lines 348 and 349, and Public Works is taken out with and added Infrastructure and Development in line 363, and same, Public Works Department, Department of Building Permits and Inspections is replaced with Infrastructure and Development on lines 372 and 373, and 385 and 386, Building Permits and Inspection is substituted with Infrastructure and Development, that occurs in lines 395 and 403, as well as lines 410, excuse me, 411, and 412. The next is, Public Works is eliminated, Infrastructure and Development is added in. The next is Public Works is eliminated, Infrastructure and Development is added in in lines four twenty-three. Same thing is done in four thirty-three and thirty-four, as well as forty, four forty-three and four forty-four, and line four forty-eight. Again, the same change also occurs in lines four sixty-three and four sixty-four, as well as four sixty-six and four sixty-seven. And down in line four seventy-eight, we are now eliminating Public Works, substituting Infrastructure and Development, along with the modification of the D W P is being eliminated and, in its place, the D I D. Under four eighty-nine, Public Works is gone, Infrastructure and Development is in, and that also occurs in lines four ninety-eight and four ninety-nine. The same thing occurs in five ten and five eleven, in five twenty-one and twenty-two, and five twenty-five. Down in five thirty-three, again, the same change, Public Works goes out, Infrastructure and Development comes in, and that also occurs in line five thirty-five, as well as five forty-five. Again, the same change in five fifty-five, five fifty-seven. Building permits and inspections is replaced with Infrastructure and Development in five sixty-four and sixty-five. And down in five ninety-three and ninety-four, Buildings, Permits, and Inspections is replaced with Infrastructure and Development. Continue on, lines six oh four and six oh five, same change, same change in six thirteen and six fourteen, and same change in line six thirty-one. In six thirty-two, Department of Public Works is eliminated from that list. Let's see, line six forty-four, Building, Housing, and Zoning is out, Infrastructure and Development is in. Four, six forty-five, Department of Public Works is eliminated, and Public Works is eliminated in six fifty-five, and in its place, Infrastructure and Development is added. And in six seventy-two and six seventy-three, Building, Housing, and Zoning is eliminated, Infrastructure and Development is in. And Public Works in the building, Department of Building and Housing is out, in lines six eighty-nine and six ninety, Infrastructure and Development is in. Same change with seven oh one and seven oh two. Under seven oh seven, Neighborhood Services and Code Compliance is out, and Housing and Community Development is in. Seven seventeen, Public Works is out, Infrastructure and Development is in. And you, the same change is occurring in line seven thirty-nine and seven forty, Building is out, Infrastructure's in. And seven fifty-one, Building is out, Infrastructure's in, seven fifty-two. And that also, Public Works is out, and Infrastructure's in in seven seventy and seven seventy-one. And seven seventy-eight and seven seventy-nine, Building is out, Infrastructure's in. Seven ninety-two, Public Works, Department of Building Permitting is out, and Infrastructure's in. And the same is occurring with line seven ninety-four and seven ninety-five, and the words, the directors, and come out in line seven ninety-five. Again, Building comes out, Infrastructure goes in in eight oh one, eight oh two, and eight oh four and eight oh five, and eight sixteen and seventeen, the same change. Eight twenty-five, the same change. Same change in eight twenty-eight. Same change in eight thirty-four. Same change in eight forty-nine and eight fifty-four. And overall, in eight seventy-one and seventy-two, same change. And the same change in eight eighty-nine. Down in, same change in nine oh eight, nine oh nine, and also line nine twelve. And we are near the end. Public Works is out, Infrastructure and Development is in in nine eighteen and nine nineteen. In line nine twenty-five, same, Building Permitting and Inspections is out, Infrastructure's in. And under nine thirty-three, Building Permitting and Inspections is out, Infrastructure's in. And to my knowledge, that is it. That's all, folks.
We made it.
We're not finished yet. We have to vote.
On line eleven.
Any questions?
On line eleven, in the open paragraph, sixteen should be seventeen.
In line eleven of the title?
Yes.
Um, sixty, okay, gotcha, fixed. And there's another one I'm going to check on up there too, which if it needs it, I'll fix it before the next one. And that was just a repetition of seventeen point, no, it isn't repeated. My mind thought it was repeated. So we're good. Thank you.
He put that in there to see if you were paying attention.
He picked his own time and what was he supposed to pay attention to?
All right. If there are no other questions, I'll call the motion, all those in favor of ordinance number two four five nine for the first reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Mrs. Nichols, is there any public comment?
No, sir.
In that case, we are adjourned.
Mr. Anderton, thank you for sticking through to the end.